That's from last month.
Okay, that was last month.
Yeah, just changed the days.
We need to change that. Five fifteen.
Sixty.
At seven thirty PM. To act on the application received by GBI clerk Greg Maffei, 183 Hable Street, Raleigh, Mass. Advocate is requesting special permit under section 5.4 of zoning bylaws from the zoning Board of Appeals for the construction of a two-car garage with room above and attached breezeway located at 183 Hable Street, Raleigh, Mass. The property is in the Outlying District and is shown on the census map sixteen Rock Fifty-Six. Interested parties are invited to attend the hearing and be heard on matters relevant to the application. Copies of the application are unfiled with zoning Board of Appeals and may be reduced in the ZBA office during close to business hours. The purpose of this hearing is for the Board to hear and consider the pertinent facts relating to the application and to approve with conditions or deny. Before hearings in the public, the applicant will be allowed to present his case and then Board members will be allowed to ask questions and comment. The applicant now has the floor.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Bill Pipers, Guaranty builder, and also with Mr. Maffey this evening. We have a... We have a... In your packet, you'll see a plot plan with a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling located at 183 Hable Street. These are a couple of the pictures of the particular dwelling, the front and the left, the right side of the dwelling. We're proposing a single-story breezeway attaching to the right side of the dwelling with an attached two-car garage with a storage room above. We believe that it's not any more detrimental to the area as the existing particular dwelling. Many of the dwellings and buildings in that particular area do not already meet the fifty-foot setbacks that are required in that outline area. And we are... We believe that it is not any more detrimental to the particular area. The basic reason for attaching it in such a manner is basically, as you can see, the entrance on the side of the existing dwelling so that we can attach the breezeway is in such a position that requires such a placement of other proposed structure. Also, as you can see in your particular plot plan, there is an existing swimming pool that is right to the rear of the proposed dwelling, which would be somewhat of a hardship to have to move that particular pool. But again, it would not line up with the dwelling to make it accessible.
Is that in the dog trap pool?
Yes. Questions?
On the drawing, on the garage, it looks like it has three garage doors.
It's either way, they say there's two. It is. The way for Mrs. Maffey to enter, she doesn't back up too well, so she's hoping to be able to drive in and then drive right back out again on that front one. Come in on the side and then just drive back out on the front one. That's the reason for that.
So I come to say, this has three garage doors there.
Because it's still... We're listing it as a two-car garage because that's always going to be used.
You're suggesting she can't back in, but she can get inside and turn around and drive out?
No, she's going to drive in from the side and then drive out.
So drive straight in and then drive straight out? Oh, okay.
Drive in and make a right angle turn and go out?
No, left.
Left on the inside.
She's going to drive in from the side.
Yeah.
And then drive out the front.
And then, or drive off the front, far as I can see here, she's going to have to make a ninety-degree turn. Is that right?
This is the side coming in. She's going to be on the front part.
Mrs. Sine.
See, this is the... There's two doors here.
Yeah, okay.
And then this is, I guess, her door.
Yeah?
Yep.
Okay, so she's coming in this end?
No, she's going to come in here.
No, she's coming out there.
Coming in the back.
She's going to go in and come out? She's coming in the side and then driving out the front.
Coming in the side here. Coming in the side, and far as I can see, she's going to make a...
Left turn.
Left, left turn ninety degrees.
That's correct.
And manage not to take the inside as she goes up.
Up the door.
Yeah.
Now, a foolish question.
There's no foolish question.
I know that. The two garage doors on the other side, what's going in there? What's going underneath in the garage?
She's coming in the side.
This whole garage, just for her to go in and come out?
There's two cars that were just coming in there. One would be on the right inside that she would come in and then be able to drive out the front one that she can... That faces.
So this has nothing to do with the work trucks or anything?
No.
So the work trucks will still be outside?
It looks like the proposed structure is at least equal to the existing structure in size, according to footprint. That's a little bit...
Do I have to wait this day?
No, 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 no.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. No, Greg Maffei, 183 Hable Street. I just want to be clear here. I will be using one of the garage bays for storage. No trucks are going in. They're too big to go in there. They're too high. They won't fit in up into that garage. So, but I will be using one for storage and the upstairs for storage as well. I'm trying to... I've got two quantum, or whatever you call those things, this temporary storage sheds, plus I have a trailer that's on the property that I don't want there. So I'm trying to store everything inside this building, and my wife will be parking in the garage with her car on it. I mean, that's it. There's no other vehicles going in there, maybe a lawn tractor, things like that that I have in these other temporary sheds. But there is... None of the work trucks are going in. And the block starts at nine foot six, and I believe the garage doors are only nine feet, so...
I got a contract out of here from you, and it's stating it's a three-story two-story garage.
It's just a two-car garage, is it not?
Is your contract saying it's a three?
Well, it's a three... It's a three-door.
It says three, kind of, yeah. Your contract, I guess.
The way it's laid out, it could be a three-car garage.
It's hoped for.
Yeah, you got the depth. I just like in the contract.
What's this?
Room over here.
Just the storage.
I saw it somewhere. It was labeled the bathroom.
That's in the label.
What was that?
That's in the label. It's just a storage room.
No, I don't have that one. Isn't there a clock for the second floor?
Yeah.
What's going up on the second floor? Is that just because the open?
Nothing at this point.
Just for dry storage.
In this addition, on the drawing, it looks like the peak is going to be a little bit higher than the house, or it's going to be the same level.
Same.
So it's just my eyesight.
Yeah, I think the pitch is a little bit different, but the plan matches, I think.
Yes, my eyesight goes off.
Mine's better.
Given by...
I know that feeling.
There, I didn't see them when he...
The addition doubles the size of the house, right? That was all the area in footprint of the existing home.
Pretty close, yeah.
What do we have, Paul? What are they going to add on?
Yeah, that's what... Well, I think we're up at fifteen hundred. Do you know what the total square footage is here? Because I don't see that anywhere. I see the math. I'm just... Area building is twelve ninety-six, and then you've got... You break out on the front here, the breezeway area.
I guess twelve by...
Twelve by twenty-four. Two forty. And forty-eight, two ninety-eight, so three hundred. So it's just right, tad bit, technically, tad bit larger than fifteen hundred. It's like fifteen ninety-six. Actually, it's fifteen ninety-four.
That includes the breezeway?
Yeah.
The building inspector saying that a chair that a business is currently being conducted out of the home does not meet the definition of home occupation?
Yeah, talk to us a little bit about the company.
Okay. It's a plumbing, heating, air conditioning service company, all residential. We count they have four trucks, plus my pickup truck. That's as big as I'm getting at this point. We do service, like I said, service installation and repair. We do a lot of oil-to-gas conversion systems, things like that. I have two offices in the house, my wife and myself. So I don't know why that wouldn't.
Two offices related to the same business?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
You have any employees?
In the building? Or are there any employees? Of course, I mean, I got five trucks. I'm not starting off five trucks. I have...
You have exceeded... You exceeded the intent of the home occupation by law.
Which is what I'm sorry not familiar with.
Which is you and your wife had a pickup truck or a truck.
That's in the bylaws? I'm sorry, I'm just...
No, it's not...
I had my attorney's...
No, that was specifically...
Okay. Yeah, I thought I was conforming because I had my attorneys look at it, and they said, "You're fine, Greg."
But...
I'm sorry.
Got to get a new attorney. It's right there in the bylaws. I said it wasn't in the bylaws.
No, I...
Home occupation, I believe.
The definition of home occupation, and attorney, you know, is not familiar. I mean, zoning laws, he probably knows that building, they are different in every town. Different in every town. And the bylaw definition, and a lot of people stumble on it, is, as the building inspector pointed out, it's an occupation that is customarily carried on entirely within a dwelling unit by residents of the unit, and which in no way changes the character of the building. A home occupation, you know, an attorney, you know, or yourself practicing inside.
Okay.
Typically, you wouldn't know the business is there.
Okay. So what would that mean? Because there are other businesses in my area. I mean, a couple buildings down, and we've got the woodworker right across the street.
Right.
You know, where he does the cabinet making and all that. So is that all under special permit? Is that what that is?
Probably be a possibility. Some of those may have been there before the...
Some could be a grand line. In some instances...
I'm just wondering where that line is. We have the auto shop down there, a little further down the street. I know it's up closer to Route One. We have Bootchers.
That's from grandfather. That's right. Father's grandfather.
It's all great. It's different, but...
Yeah. We... When we run into situations like this, and typically, you know, the success of your business has probably been to keep adding vehicles and adding staff. And that's positive for other residents in the area. While I don't think there's anyone here on the border or town that wants to accrue a business from growing, there's a component of, well, you know, where can we actually put the vehicles? We have a number of cases over the years where businesses grow, and staff grows and vehicles grow. For you, the business person, it's fine, but for neighbors, it's not such an exciting event. I'm personally a little disappointed that you indicate you don't want to put your vehicles in the structure. Part of my initial view of it was, okay, you know, we're looking to get the vehicles off the street. We've had cases where companies like yours that have grown beyond one or two vehicles, you know, the owner finds another more commercial location to park the vehicles. Because staff may be coming, your guys, and they may come to the site, leave vehicles on the site, leave the site.
Correct.
That's where you begin to move away from the customary home occupation. If you or your wife are going in and out of their office five times a day, it's not like having a bunch of guys coming in and out at different times than you have in a car wash. So that's where there's a quandary of whether there's air in addition to the setback. If you were... If you were telling me you wanted to do something back here, which would not be conducive to being next to your house, which I understand. It may be more sympathetic to putting such a large structure that close to the road, given the size of it, and then give it the desire to actually shelter some of the vehicles.
Okay.
Now, I recognize you're on 133. I don't know that I would consider...
There's a curve in that road right there. That is a dangerous one.
For vehicles going in and out.
There's about eight hundred feet of sight view there, which you're looking at.
How fixed are you on... And I just had a... It looks like a pool. I just lost it, like twenty-four, twenty-seven. I lost it this winter after six years. So I just took it. Well, you know, I'm not suggesting you do that. I'm just suggesting I've just went through exactly what's involved in the side actually building that on it. Which I have to take down, too. How fixed are you on the plan as proposed?
Well, I think you've brought up a lot of questions to me right now about the zoning laws. I mean, I was just going under the impression, I see all these other businesses there, I'm on 133. I'm in the Outlying District, I'm saying, you know, why not? I mean, I was hoping to be able to run my business at home and not take on any more overhead. I mean, that was the idea behind it. I can keep my, you know, my efficiencies as well as I can and keep my overhead down.
No, I understand.
And keep the business running lean and mean, which I've been doing. And in this economy, you know, to grow the way that I have at this point, it's a good thing, but it's also very challenging to keep the expenses in order, you know, and where I already own the land and all that. But you've brought up some questions to me about, you know... I think there's going to be issues even after this, is what I'm sensing, is for me to get something to move forward here. Is it worth my time and effort to do all this? And possibly just move out of town before I go somewhere else.
Well, you know, that's a... That's why I say that's a dramatic reaction. We hate that it has suggested...
It's been something in my mind. I'm saying, you know, where can I do this? I didn't think I was non-conforming, and I'm finding out now that I am, which is, I guess I should have done some more research on it.
I mean, you've got a good-sized business. I do. So, I mean, it's not like a, you know, it's not a home occupation. A lot of guys, you know, I know you...
You and I have disagreements on that. I mean, I used to have, you know, twenty-five trucks, so, I mean, for me to have four or five, to me, is a small home business. That's a home-run business. You know, so...
You're right, but as the leader points out, for most of us, a home business is...
I understand. The definition is different. You know, I was told, not in a meeting like this, but I was told by others within the town, that if I kept it under five trucks, I was fine. And I said, "Okay, that's fine." So that's what I had been told, and I said, "Okay, well, I'm not going to get any of that," and now I'm hearing something a little bit different, which is okay. I mean, I'm not here to...
No, and that's why I'm not going to speak with the rest of the board, but who have been here a lot longer than I have.
Sure.
However, you know, I hate you to feel you have no avenue here. It may not be the avenue that you identified here. And the way it's structured now, I think if the Board were to want to consider, and I don't know that it would, an approval, there would be restrictions on how you could use that space and what you could park there, and what, you know, where you could park things that might create a constraint for you. I don't know.
Right. Well, I guess I'm going to ask, would it make sense for me to withdraw this without prejudice and then come back with something else? I mean, is that... I'm just asking for the opinion here because I...
Before we do that, though, if... What I'm sensing is that you... The closest to the street is one of the particular projects on this location. If we did get rid of the pool, move the particular structure, the proposed structure, moved it back more within the building envelope, and created an area in the back here more where the particular trucks, maybe with a stockade fence or something such as that, and were visible from the street, would that be more in line with what we talked about?
What do you think?
No, but home occupation is quite specific, that it's carried on entirely by the members of the family within the... Within the structure. Now, that doesn't include truck drivers and other people and so forth. So there is a problem with the home occupation. The home occupation, the home business.
I said, you know, when I first saw this, I'm looking it over, and... And to me, I'm looking at it, and I'm saying, this is a commercial building in the Outlying District, which isn't allowed, and I'm looking down here, and it's got here, upstairs, there's a bathroom up here, right there, and down here, there's another one. And that, to me, is an indication that you want to use the upstairs for storage and a place for your employees to wash up and clean up before they go home. I mean, it's...
Okay.
It's an expansion of the non-conforming use, and we don't have to commit for it.
Okay.
That's the way I'm seeing it.
Yeah, I... To be honest with you... Yeah, I, to be honest with you, I was wondering all month long what was going on when you recommended that I.
Come back.
Come back. And, you know, that's why I called my attorney and I said, you know, what's going on? And he was looking through all these things, you know. I thought it was just a setback at all. I was concerned, but I didn't realize this issue. I wish I had known about it before then because I wouldn't have wasted everybody's time.
Well, candidly, that's part of the reason a board like this exists for you as a resident.
I understand. I'm working with my other property, Mariposa, and we're going through a lot of this stuff and I understand it. I just, I guess I need to ask more questions. So I'm going to ask to withdraw this without prejudice and then I'm.
I know you have cleaned up that property and made it as nice as you possibly can. Well, which is because it is, it's a nice looking property.
It is. I, to be honest with you, I wish I had the barn at the side of it. That's not mine. It's fallen down into my area.
Yeah, right.
You know, and I wish I could, you know, there's no way to chop that back up and get it back onto my land. So that's a little bit disappointing, but we'll continue to make it look nice. We love being there. Except that it did. That's okay.
If what you truly want is a two-car garage.
Oh, I'm not going to pull any punches here. I mean, I was going to store my business stuff in there. You know, I have the green trailer out there that I'm trying to get rid of and all the other storage stuff. So of course I'm going to use it for business purposes, meaning storing materials and things like that, no question. And someday would I have wanted a bathroom upstairs? Possibly, yeah. I mean, I'm not going to say that that's out of the, even if it was my man cave up there, you know, I could get away from everybody in the house. All the kids I have still live with me at 27 years old.
Well, you know, I think, right, I think that, you know, I think we're down to saying, because what you have said, though, is that you didn't intend it really for business use. And if you really, you know, a scenario for you to consider, since it sounds like you'd want to look at scenarios, and I don't know where your timeframe is, you could certainly withdraw, you know, without prejudice and then come back at any point unless you're feeling like, you know what, we need to sit down and talk this through and maybe we can come back in 30 or 60 days and figure something out because we do want to do something.
Well, possibly, but it sounds like I have some new things that aren't necessarily just to do with the building now. It has to do with my business and things I have to decide. Because it's a substantial investment.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, you know, I mean, it's not, it's not like I'm paying 10 grand at this thing and that's going to be that. So for me to do that, it may restrict me in some of my other business issues that I need, you know, I need to be able to run the business out of that house, you know, like I'm doing now. And if I'm nonconforming now.
Mr. Matthews doesn't want the zoning officer to come in after we build something such as this and say, hey.
That's right. That's right. You know.
No, that's why.
Yeah, and I appreciate it, to be honest with you. I'm glad everybody's upfront about it.
I think we'd rather have you understand, you know, the board might be responsive to the equivalent of a two-car garage structure that was out back out of the setback area, number one. Perhaps wasn't.
Makes it a little difficult to attach it with a breezeway.
Yeah, well, that.
No, no, I understand. I'm just saying, you know, the point that Nat makes about the home occupation is, you know, we can tolerate home occupations that operate the way you have a business that's out of the business if it appears to be more of a home occupation.
Sure.
And you moved your vehicle. Now.
Well, I mean, just so you understand, it's not my goal to keep the vehicles there. They're all getting GPS put in there. They're all going to be taking them home with them. But they will be coming, you know, in the mornings, coming there. And then if that's an issue, then I have to rethink my strategy.
Well, the only way across the street is available if you're interested.
Yeah, well, he's hoping that the fire department gets it.
Yeah, no.
I talked to him already, and he said he couldn't subdivide. I asked him, can I get space here? He said, no, they won't let me subdivide.
Would you like to ask for continuance and to talk it over and so forth?
I would at this point, yes. Yeah, I don't want to.
Do you ask for continuance?
Well, without, no, no, I want to withdraw without prejudice at this point, yeah, because I've got to rethink this whole thing. I've already made an investment in this.
You said that you had employees that would be taking trucks home?
Yes, those trucks. My plan is, right now I'm in the middle of getting new software where there's tablets going in each of the trucks so we can track the trucks and they can communicate back and forth to the office. I mean, that's, was supposed to happen three months ago. Again, there's been some software glitches that we haven't been able to do there with. So eventually they'll all be taking their trucks home and keeping them in their own homes. But they will be coming in in the morning, you know, dropping off paperwork, and there won't be a lot hopefully with the tablets in there.
Right.
But, you know, anyhow, they will be coming back and forth to the place of, the home, the place of, I'm going to call it the place of business because I'm running the business there. So they would be coming back there. But no, my goal is to have my truck and my wife, but I'm not going to say that there'd never be another person there, you know, answering phones for me or something. That's a huge possibility, you know, that somebody could. And I don't want, I don't want to deceive people in any way.
It's not the type of business that has walk-in customers out the street or something like that.
We're going out to all the, obviously. Wish I could do it from that.
Yeah, no, no, I mean, the board, I think, would like to find a way to help you if you give us something that doesn't have lots of little red flags for us to try to work around.
Okay. So I mean, if the trucks were not there, if we did let the trucks go home, which is our goal, I mean, it's not going to happen immediately because I'm still waiting for all this software to come in so I can track the trucks and know where everything's going. But that, unattached from the house, I think is what you're saying, you'd rather have it pushed back. There's no real way to, I mean, that'd build a huge breezeway. I mean, that'd cost.
Well, I don't know what you would have to consider.
You can make an L-shaped breezeway.
Do something like that. I mean, I don't know, you know, that's for you guys to work out.
That's right. Well, I just, I just.
We don't need to withdraw this. We can ask for a continuance and look at some alternative plans and then come back.
Well, I guess my question is.
If you're talking about moving the trucks off-site, that may not be an issue and so what, because in the in-house office, it's not necessarily as a business because there's no walk-in traffic. And I think that type of office is acceptable, I think, in most towns.
Yeah, I mean, you could take a continuance and withdraw in 60 days.
Okay, well, that's going to be my next question.
It's not only a one-shot deal. If you think, you know, give me 60 days to sort of think this through, you might still come back.
And then we can withdraw at that time.
Well, that's fine, we'll do that because I just want to look at all options now.
You might still come back and we can't find something that works for you, but you can then say, I'm out.
Business is not allowed. Okay, we do have timeframes.
Only because you have to try to operate a common business.
Please un-trim. Do we have a form?
One term.
For him to sign.
No, that's another issue.
Ask. He should know before he leaves. I mean, this is what Kenny's, the building inspector.
Unless they got a copy of the building inspector.
I don't know if Kenny gave one or not.
One that Kenny says is, you know, he's, the proposed additionally doubles in both the area and the footprint of the existing home. Garage includes a three-car garage, three garage doors, room for three vehicles, a second floor, double hung windows. I mean, this is the building inspector just putting down what he's seen. Finished a stairway leading, finished stairway leading to the garage. It appears that the business is currently being conducted out of the home, does not meet the definition of home occupation contained in section 2.0 of the zoning bylaws. Although the residents are allowed to park their own construction and other business vehicles in their yard, allowing non-resident vehicles to be parked on lots located in residential district contradicts the intent of the home occupation definition. This is what your building inspector, did you get a copy of this?
No, I never got a copy of it. I would have looked at a copy if I could.
In addition, the storage trailers located on the site appear to also be in violation of the Raleigh zoning bylaws under section 4.8, uses permitted in our districts.
Lisa can get this to you.
Okay.
We can send you that.
They've been here for over a year, he says, so, I mean, it's just.
Just the one trailer?
I mean, we understand. We understand that you're operating like this.
That trailer came from three doors down. So if it was nonconforming, nobody had it was nonconforming it is.
Yeah, no, it didn't happen for a while, but it can't happen over three months, I think it is.
He had it until he built his garage, you know, for years.
You know.
Again, I'm not going to, like I said, I understand everything that's going on now. I wish I had all the information from the building inspector and all that stuff because I certainly would have explored that more before I even spent the money to have these plans drawn up if I had known these things. Because I had inquired about it and I was told, again, off the record, that running the, you know, up to five trucks was fine. I said, okay.
Yeah, I.
Again, and that's obviously wrong.
I would like to request a continuance for this for 60 days so that we can further investigate.
She said she didn't want to. So I, can I come down tomorrow someplace?
No, I wouldn't think so.
You can scratch me some paper right tonight or something.
If he comes in Monday, I can give him something Monday.
Sure, that's fine.
Usually down here, four permits on your house.
Well, we could just grant the continuance.
Yeah, we can grant it.
We just grant it.
We can grant a continuance for 60 days.
For 60 days. You've had enough time? Do you want more?
After all, we have extended many things.
Yeah. I think if you'd like a continuance, we'll just grant it.
Yeah, we'll give you a continuance. And then if I could get copies of the building inspector and all that stuff.
Lisa will get them. They were generated because we submitted and ran them all.
You can get us a town hall, you can get a copy of the bylaws.
All right. They're online.
Oh, they're online.
They're online. Online, you, they won't have any.
Got to read the attorney.
Thanks for your time.
Five of Kenny's, you know, just off the record.
Yes.
You want to cut the size down?
I want to cut the size down. And maybe.
Exactly.
So it's not so.
Pronounced on the front of the street.
You're not the first board that's asked you to do that.
Okay, all right.
All right, thanks.
Thanks for your time.
If we were helpful.
Oh, yeah.
We want to motion down for the continuance.
I picked them up against the house. Right? Well, you know what not to do, I guess, because you have to know what to do.
Go ahead, make the motion.
I make a motion that we allow this Mr. Matthews to a two-month continuance.
Okay. So do I? All those in favor?
It's July.
July.
We work all year long.
Okay.
Lucky you.
And we don't get paid. This is all free will.
Right.
I know.
Don't hate us.
Not at all. Thank you, boy.
Thanks, everybody.
All right, thank you.
You're a new lawyer.
No, no, that was my stuff. It's all mine. It's in front of me, not you. I'll lose it.
But he likes to look for your papers.
Gee, I got it back.
I can't wait for the losing.
I lose stuff easy enough without having you.
School, is it?
I know, I'm online.
That's all right.
I'm on, yeah.
Keep it free shooters. Okay.
I mean, from here on.
Next case is 112 Newbury Road. I've read all that plate before, so I don't dispense with reading all of it. Public notice, David, this case number 1303 from Stephen and Shannon Tudolph, 112 Newbury Road. A public hearing will be held, this is, this was advertised in the town hall on May 8th and May 15th, 2013, and reads as follows. Public hearing will be held at the Town Hall Annex, 39 Central Street on Thursday, 5/16/13 at 7:45 PM. To act on an application received from Steve and Shannon Tudolph, 112 Newbury Road, Raleigh, Mass. Application is requesting variance under section 6.6 of the zoning bylaws and the board appeals for an addition with an in-law apartment located at 112 Newbury Road, Raleigh, Mass. The property is in the Outlying District and is shown on the assessors' map, 5 lot 51. All right, I'll do a little explanation here for the board as to what has happened here. Before I do that, we have the butters list and we have all that stuff that's all taken care of. Any members of the board in conflict of interest in this case?
No.
No? Okay. It seems that, I don't know when, but Mr. Tudolph and his wife set out to build a three-car garage with a room above initially. And several months went by and they changed their mind and decided that what they wanted was an in-law apartment. So they went to the building inspector and the way I hear it from the building inspector and Mr. Tudolph was that the building inspector advised Mr. Tudolph that he really didn't want an in-law apartment, he wanted a two-family.
Tom, can I stop you there just so we start off right?
Yeah.
I never wanted a garage with a room above. I wanted an in-law from the beginning. I just want to make that clear because it seems to be where we keep kind of going back to is that I changed my mind after construction began. My intention from the beginning was an in-law. That's what I went down and approached the building inspector with from the beginning.
Where did the plans come from with the construction?
What it was is, you've been out to my house, a lot of fill has been brought in. At one point, we thought it would make more sense to put a garage where you wouldn't go up the rise and the in-law would be the living space, which he has listed on the building permit, that was going to be the in-law. But it was, or what he now considers the living space for the two-family. But it was always from the time that permit was pulled with the intention of it, like I said, I wanted to be an in-law, then there was the, you know, advice to make it a two-family. So I just, I just want to make it clear that I did not start this process and then changed my mind. From the beginning, the intention was for, for living space. That's all, I just want to clear that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I just interject? When you say from the beginning, Steve, what is your definition of the beginning?
Before we even, I mean, before we even started this process, my wife's parents have always rented, they're getting older, they're never going to be able to buy something paid off. So my wife and I talked and she wanted to be able to buy a place where her parents would be able to retire and if they wanted to get an RV and go across country. So I went down before any plans were ever drawn up or anything and I talked to the building inspector and I said, I'd like to put an in-law. And at that point, that's when it was suggested, pretty much told that in-laws are very hard to get into town, they're kind of frowned upon, a lot of legwork, can't kind of be guaranteed that have to be reapplied, made it sound like it was going to be next to impossible. Then I was told that we can make it a two-family, the building inspector could grant that. Based on the year that the house was built, there was, it was obviously overlooked that the lot size was slightly too small. Based on that advice, that's why we went with what we did because I was also told that if it was gonna be a two-family, it had to be connected and that's why we connected it with a common mudroom to my existing house. Initially, I would have loved to have just done a separate, like carriage house type garage, in-law above. And then based on that, we came up with the garage. And then after talking to, the person who's gonna do the site work, we kinda started thinking about it and there was gonna be a lot of retaining walls and stuff to make it all work with the grates and stuff. And then we decided not to go with the garage and to just go with above. So there was plans submitted for the garage, that's what the permit was pulled on.
Okay, there.
But, but, and there was, and just to make it clear, there was a bedroom, bathroom, kitchen, so it wasn't like it was just a big great room above it.
Yeah.
It was, it was the same number of rooms and everything, it was just, you know, the design was different, but the actual space was the same.
Okay.
And then before we broke ground, the new plans were submitted and then we went through the process.
Yeah. Okay, because it looked, I appreciate the clarification.
Yeah, and that's why, I'm sorry, that's why I wanted to make it clear because that's what everybody seems to be hung up on is that this kinda started and then we kinda made those miscommunications probably down the road.
Well, it, I mean, it looks like you'll change your mind, as you described you did, but the original intent was in fact, you know, a garage structure with some living space above, which is fine. And then because of the lapse of time when the original permit was, was taken, which by town records indicated was back in oh-seven. And when, I don't know precisely, it looked like in oh-nine or ten is when, when the structure actually ended up being built. In that interim, maybe it was oh-eight, but it wasn't, it doesn't look like it was done immediately when the permit was pulled. And I think in that interim is when the change was made as to how you were gonna actually build the structure. Now it's been built the way it is. That's fine. I mean, we understand that.
Yeah, and like I said, I just wanted you to be clear that we did not break ground until the plans, which show as it's built, which are what is on record with the town, those were submitted before a piece of dirt was moved. So that's all I wanted to make clear is that.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, but that's, that's good.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't wanna harp on it.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
All right, and as he stated, that Ken advised him to go with a two-family house, of which he has built. And his in-law is living there. At present. And.
So what are we being requested to do?
So what we are being.
Asked to do.
Asked to do is to grant him an in-law apartment.
You want an in-law.
To change, to change its status. But what, what the problem, what the problem is, is they went to refinance, right? And the appraiser came and did what appraisers do and so forth and checked it all out. Then he went down to the assessor's office and found out that what they had was a single-family home. And that's what the assessor's records show. And so the bank held up their refinance because they weren't gonna finance a two-family home. They were, they might have done it, but at a different rate and so forth and whatnot. And so what he's trying to do is to refinance the place as a single-family home with an in-law apartment and get its designation changed from what the bank says is a two-family home to a single-family with an in-law. And that way, those records and the records in the assessor's office will jive. And it's because they're two different, two different things, he can't get his refinancing. Is that it in that shop?
Pretty much, yeah.
Yep. You get a building permit, you build a structure, then you get an occupancy permit. Where does all that go? Doesn't it go to town hall? So they know what it is? It should have, no it didn't.
And I do have the occupancy permit, so it was also.
That's what I'm assuming you do, yeah. I'm just surprised that it, you know, we missed all that all these years.
Right.
Now, my question, second question, the first question would be, is the size gonna be a problem?
Well, your question.
There are several things that could be a problem, but.
Yeah.
It is built and, yeah. So we gotta correct it and move on.
Do you, do you, Steve, do you need? You know, I think a thing we wanna be concerned about though too is I understand your desire to think about being an in-law apartment, but I think it's important for you to understand from the town's perspective, regardless of assessors involved, the difference between an in-law apartment and a two-family. You know, there, there are some that would say a two-family, which a designation which will move with the property, as opposed to an in-law designation which only moves with you, the owner.
Yep.
And those go away when you sell that property because you, if you set it up as an in-law, you have to file it as such, it gets recorded and it's on record. So the next time somebody does a title search, they find that information and they find out that in fact, ooh, this is no longer an in-law apartment. So if you're trying to sell it as an in-law, they have to ask for it again.
Yep.
Now, under normal conditions, they, they might be normally able to get it under conditions like your own, it's typically a family member who's gonna, you know, reside there. But I would have thought frankly that the bank would have been more interested in the two-family designation as opposed to an in-law, because it's, an in-law is really temporary.
The bank.
Does the bank, I mean, what's the bank, what's their frustration?
I mean, obviously, you know, when I went to, what happened is, when I talked to them at first and I explained to them that we had new construction, that it was a single-family that was now converted to a two-family, they said, do yourself a favor, go to town hall, make sure all the paperwork's been squared away. And I did that back in January.
Yeah.
And when I did, there was Sean McFadden.
Yeah.
There was some discrepancy, some miscommunication between the building inspector and him. And as far as the building inspector was concerned, it was all set. It was a two-family, it was done, or signed off. As far as the assessor's office is concerned, he said, no. The building permit never, the wording on the building permit never got changed. They were never made aware of the things for that. And then come to find out, the lot size is actually too small, so I would have had to come get a variance for the lot size for it to be a two-family, which was overlooked.
Right.
And after some battling back and forth, you know, what it, what seems to be the best for the town, for my neighbors, is for it to be an in-law. In that, where am I, in the residential district that I'm in, there's not many two-families. It would hurt my neighbor's property values to be a two-family, I don't wanna do that. So I would rather be an in-law, which is what I wanted from the beginning, before I kinda got pulled in this little loop. And I tried to do it straightforward by the book from the beginning, so I wouldn't be sitting here today. And I just wanna clean this up and move forward. And honestly, like I said, the two-family, now knowing what I know. And, you know, there's a lot of this process that, you know, I'd love to talk to you guys sometime off the books because as someone who doesn't build houses all the time, I think there was information that maybe, maybe I should have found on my own, but you know, when you talk to a town employee or official, you assume that the information they give you.
Exactly.
You know, and shame on me for not. But that being said, you know, at the end of the day, I just, I'd like to be an in-law. There's some, the way it's built, obviously, is a reflection of the fact that we thought it could be a two-family. So we weren't concerned with the size as much, you know, we attached it. So, you know, obviously, those things are non-conforming, but I would hope you guys would take into consideration the fact that the reason they're like that is because we went down the road that we did, based on the information that I had. So that, that's where I'm at. And honestly, I just wanna clean this up and move forward, that's where I'm at.
Okay, yeah, that's fine, we appreciate your candor. We would like to work with you. Isn't, Don, is it, there's a butter who says a kind of.
Yes, I'm Steve Cassios, I'm live right across the street. I couldn't ask for a better name. I, I, no fault of his, I know that because I've talked to a lot of people since I got that letter in the mail. And, and, and being on the planning board, I got this last night. And as far as I'm concerned, to save you guys a lot of aggravation and the person who gives out the permits, I think general requirements should be given to people who are doing in-law apartments so they know what they, what they're up against or what they're not up against, or what they have to do, you know? This way, we shouldn't be here for this, we know that. You know that, I know that. This shouldn't be going on right now.
Well, as, as you, as you saw with our prior applicant, you know, he made some investigations, even using an attorney, feeling he had adequate information to move forward in the direction he did. And if he had simply come into us when he first sat down and said, this is what I'm thinking of doing, is this a workable option? And we do this a lot with people who, who come in before they do anything and say, I'm just thinking. Even people who, before they buy property.
Well, let me say this then, let me say this.
And then there, to your point, what we have tried to do in the last couple of years, the planning board and, and we have as well, we've tried to put as much information online so that people like you and I as residents, and I live right down the street from you guys. I'm at one fifty-six, so I know both your houses. You know, it's there for us to look. It's still sometimes better to try to say before a board, what do you think? Is this gonna work or not?
Now I know that, now I would do that, but how does some new guy in town know that that's the road they should go?
That's, you know, I, we talk to builders who, who come to us and say, oh, I'm gonna do this. Time out, you can't do that. What do you mean, I can't do that? I did it over at Topsfield. No, you can't do it here. Come into us, tell us what you're talking about and we'll help you figure out what you can do.
Well, let me, let me ask you this. Shouldn't the person who hands out permits know how much land is required to do it two-family? Before you even tell them to do it two-family?
That, yeah, that kind of information should be available and I believe is available online. You, you do have to research it and we're trying, we've in fact, on the zoning board, put a pack together. Now, now Steve did this all before this, this is really in the last two or three years. Because we've recognized and heard this kind of lament before. It's a problem, I didn't know, you know? And now time gets wasted and miscommunications occur.
I'll be honest with you, I don't know, I'm all eager to talk to you.
No, most of us will.
There's, there's just so much to, zoning board of appeals, planning, anything.
Now, now he's as much an, he's, Steve's gonna be as much an expert on in-laws and roundly as anybody.
Right, we all are. We all are.
So he, so, so if you really wanna know how to do it, you go talk to him, 'cause he's done it. And, and, you know, we've tried to provide packets and information so that at least ask yourself all these questions. Are you doing this, then go here, are you doing this, then go here. If you're gonna do this, you gotta do the planning board and the zoning board, you know? Go to the board of health. I mean, another question that I, I think Ken said and Dave, if you remember, I mean, there's the issue of the septic capability. You know, when you have the in-law, you're asking the property to support extra amount of people. Does your current septic system actually large enough to support the people that are given there? It's not like you and I having kids and saying, well, septic supports six people. There's two of us, I don't know if we're gonna have more than three kids, probably not. And they say, go with it. You know, those are the other things that we like to look at when we make this kind of a designation.
I just have one more question. Steve hits the half a billion dollar lottery this week. Steve's gone.
He's done, right, 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 right.
The new people buy the house, right? Now it reverses back to a single-family, am I correct?
Yes, yep.
Right, it reverses back to a single-family. The people who buy the house have to apply for an in-law apartment.
Correct.
Correct?
Yes, right.
If they qualify.
Right.
Okay, well, here's the other thing. Will the butters be notified that he's a partner for them?
Oh, sure.
Okay, that's all.
Yeah, formal process, yeah.
Like I said, I couldn't ask for a better name.
Wow, yeah, no, no, no.
I got no problem.
He's awful quiet, though.
But when you get a, when you get a letter in the mail and, and, and look at our variance, when the building's already done, well, that's a little odd, isn't it?
Well, no, you're right. You're, you're absolutely right. I mean, when we first saw it, 'cause I saw the house being built, you know, and I saw it being done and I'm, when I saw it, I said, the guys live in there, there's people in there, you know? It's all set, it's the, you know, and, and more often than not, what we see is a completed structure where an in-law, for whatever reasons, wants to now relocate and live in that structure and someone says, you know my garage and my upstairs area? Here's what I wanna convert it to. I wanna turn it into an in-law, but I have to build a kitchen, I have to build a bath. You know, this is the space I got. And, and we look at it before it happens, that's why it's unusual. It's all there, it's already in place. We have some constraints that we have to back into now because, you know, you had that situation back then and if we had known back then, we probably would have addressed it for you originally when you were.
Right, I mean, if I knew I was going for an in-law, I would, what was built would obviously have been completely different.
You're going on passes for the guy.
Yeah, it's, there are still a lot of these other issues now.
Yeah, then we wanna get going. All right, now that, that apartment has two stories, right?
Yep.
Okay. And I'm looking at four hundred and eighty-four square feet per floor. Sound right, twenty-two by twenty-two?
Yep.
Okay, so that's forty-four. That's nine hundred and sixteen square feet. The in-law apartment is a little bit of seven hundred.
Seven hundred, yeah.
However, we've granted, we've granted one on Warehouse Lane, that was over nine hundred. Right, yeah. I mean, this is something, I mean, you go to court, nobody's gonna, no judge is gonna make them tear it down, so.
Right.
No.
We have to get it far.
Yeah.
If it's a mistake, let's fix it and get over it.
Yeah, I don't move along with it, yeah.
I mean, it's everybody's best interest to make it an in-law anyways.
Yeah, no, 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 I think it's fine, I think it's fine. Are you, are you a designer? I, 'cause I didn't, I didn't actually see any architectural stamps.
No, I bought an architect program and just threw it together, yeah.
Okay.
I'm not.
No, no.
You a builder?
No.
Okay.
I'm a wine maker.
Wine maker.
A little different.
To his old bed.
Just don't tell us you're doing it in.
In your basement.
I don't wanna know.
It's not that.
Right, right.
It's gonna spill. Spill in the basement, right.
All right.
Okay. I, I have. Well, the hardship on the variance would be, you can't tear it down, right? Well, we don't grant variances anyway. All right, all right, so can we do it another way? It's supposed to be a special permit.
Maybe.
Special permit to in-law. All right.
Variances are, if you're not bad alive, it's extremely hard to do.
Okay, all right. All right, I would, I would entertain a motion to grant, grant this. And.
Do we not need to get?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, draft a, a final decision. One second, man. Okay, all right, let's, we keep going before we go there, before we go there. You have one septic system, right?
Yep. It complies, the board of health looked at it even then, back in February, after it was all signed off again. And what I did do is file a deed rider, stating the number of bedrooms and stuff, just to be certain and clear with it. So as far as the board of health, they've looked at it and we are fully in compliance.
And then you've got one pipe going out.
Yep, yeah, it comes, the septic comes across, you've been to my house, so, under that mudroom and it ties right in and goes back into my tank. So the, the septic all comes back together, goes into the existing tanks as well.
Yeah, yeah, okay, all right. Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, now, you, you have two meters on the house.
Yep.
Okay, you'll be required to maintain those in your name.
They are, and I pay them right now, so. And, again, this, you know, it costs me an extra meter fee a month and the cost of that meter, but, um, whatever. It's water under the bridge at this point.
Can you put in one again?
Costs me a lot of money to switch it back to one.
Why does he's paying it?
Okay.
I mean, before, we're trying to do that, you know?
Yeah, they're right on the same bill.
Yeah.
And I can even show you records. That's what we've done all along. 'Cause that's the intention with this, is to assume the burden of all the utilities for them as they retire, so they will have, you know, the means to go do whatever they wanna do.
I need to address that one question as a contingency.
Say they sell the house, right?
Yeah.
Nobody knows they sold it. Somebody bought it, right? Nobody says that you're gonna know they sold the house?
No, we're gonna give him a decision, which he's gonna wanna record for the in-law.
Oh, I understand that. Or if somebody buys a house, it doesn't come in to us.
Oh, it's, it's, they're gonna, they're gonna find out, right? An attorney should uncover that, that an in-law designation has been lost.
But if they have the attorney like the other guy had.
Unless, unless the seller markets it as an in-law.
Jay, don't they have to get an occupancy permit?
Yeah, he did. He got it all that. But the new home, the new homeowner wouldn't have to. They're just buying an existing house.
No, technically, of course. Technically, I don't have to pull, I don't have to pull a permit to put a, you know, a light post in my backyard and run power out. I should, but I don't, you know?
True.
You know, so it, the enforcement issue. The closest thing we have is that it is recorded, and it becomes part of the deed, and, and it's, when he sells it.
I think you got the answer. The lawyer would, should pick it up.
I mean, it's a feature to sell, that the house is already designated, because a new buyer comes back to us, and we, we tend to reverse it.
What if he doesn't come back yet?
Yeah, well, we're assuming the lawyer would pick it up for the new people buying it. You're correct, too. If he doesn't, says, "Don't say nothing," then we don't know.
It, it's like every little.
We all know how honest and real it is, I.
Well, we know that, but there's a lot of things that goes on that we don't get permits for, so I don't wanna get into that.
Right, right, right. I mean, you know, there's, unfortunately, all towns like us have a dilemma with enforcement. And there's not enough staff for someone to send out little red flags to everybody. An in-law apartment changed.
Well, Steve ain't going anywhere anyways.
Well, you will eventually, but.
Right, Steve there, be a neighborhood watch.
I was just gonna say, I mean, if you carried that scenario further.
He is up fucking up with the grass.
Right. I mean, if you carried that scenario further, and someone did buy my house and didn't do it, and one of the neighbors notices it, and makes you guys aware of it, you would then be able to enforce that, would you not?
Oh, yeah, sure, no.
So, I mean, he does have.
You gotta keep Steve alive.
Oh, he has rec- right.
That's what I mean, so.
He just got beer for the rest of his life.
You got free wine.
All right, do, should we, should we, on the septic, since Steve has something, he needs.
According to the, as I recall, according to the in-law, he must get a certificate from the Board of Health. They have to say it. So we need a piece of paper that, from the Board of Health, saying that this is approved, which it is, and if you say, everything you say is correct, they ought to be able to just send, give us that.
Which should have been back in January. That should have been part of that.
Hold on, hold on. I have here a memo from the Board of Health that says, "The application for 112 Newby Road has been reviewed. The proposal has already been reviewed and approved without any impact to the septic system at this property. The Board of Health does not have any part in that."
Fine.
It's already been approved, it's been approved.
Okay, I mean, we could have, we could have, you have approval with a contingency, but we have that document, so that's fine.
So most have been made and all that, right?
Yeah, that's it. Was that seconded?
Yeah, I seconded it.
Oh, good.
You can write the decision.
Wait, yeah, board.
Do you need, let me ask you, do you need this decision in, in writing for your bank before thirty days?
It would help, but they've been made aware of it, and kinda, we're sort of.
The board, would, the board would be willing to draft the documents signed by the chairman, indicating that the application has been approved, and that a final decision will be available at a June meeting.
Yeah, I mean, if you would, that would be great, because.
We could produce that next week for you.
Yeah, what we've done is kinda gone on the premise of, you know, they're, wherever everything is happening, so we've gone on that, you know, we're gonna resolve this, and so we're working, the people work in that direction, but couldn't find it, so that would definitely help.
We'll, we'll get, we'll get a document from the chairman next week, and then you can pick it up from Lisa.
Okay.
And then, uh, then you can give that to your bank, and next month, you don't have to be here. The formal decision will be signed off on by the board. It'll be recorded with the town clerk, and then you can take it to registry. And then, so at least your bank knows.
Yeah, that lets me.
Okay. Well, there's, yeah, there is a twenty-day appeal period, technically speaking. But at least your, your bank would have that knowledge that, that we've seen it and approved it.
Yeah, that would help, yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, so, all right, so I second that, so you need everybody in favor. The motion have, have, um, draft, draft a decision in you for a minute. You want to second that again?
I vote yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
One more thing before I go. This is the first time I've had the honor of seeing everybody that's for the zoning board of appeals. I just wanna say thank you for all your time and truly professional board, and I know you don't get paid, but Chairman Snow, if you're, our selectmen saw, if you're watching, you should take a ball off the dinner, it's a nice place. Go ahead, watch it.
Well, thank you.
Now, I'll get a favor from the ethics commission. Now, we're really in trouble. We're in trouble now.
Thanks very much. Have a good night.
We couldn't go, we couldn't go.
Put dogs and beans.
Right.
Under fifty dollars.
Yeah.
They better be real good then.
All right.
Yeah, but you know, when you go to the building, I'll, when you go.
Nineteen? We're all, you're working for the month?
What's the June meeting date?
June date?
Twentieth.
It's the twentieth?
Twentieth.
All right, thanks. At least I'm gonna just draft a one-page note from the chairman. The applicant will come behind, get it, I'll send it to you, so you have it Monday.
Okay.
And then you can just print it out.
Okay.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the Tompkins, Disjardins Trust Marion Way 40B application. And Mr. DeCoulis is here.
John, how are you?
That's familiar.
Yeah, he does. We've seen him for many years. We've seen each other for many years. We're both getting old.
Yeah, we're already.
They ask you, "Hey, how are you?" "I got up this morning."
Oh, thank you, I just, I just took that. It's just part of my argument, I don't know. That goes with, you know, John. He may have a copy, like, yeah.
All right. We have granted you several continuances on this. And, uh, we have, uh, felt that this past year, we've gone nowhere. And so, we have decided that it's time we went somewhere. So I have this letter here that I'm gonna read into the record and give it to you. And the topic of this will go to, uh, Mr. Frangos. Mr. Frangos and, uh, Mr. Tompkins. Okay? And case number A1006. The ten represents the year. That was, uh, the sixth, uh, application in nineteen. Two thousand and ten. And here we are, two thirty, uh, in two thousand and thirteen, three years later. So, Dear Mr. DeCoulis, in effort to complete the assembly of relevant documents necessary for the board to complete its review of your application, we are writing to you on this date to indicate that the following items are either out of date, missing, or otherwise unclear, and the board requests that you submit or resubmit, as the case may be, by your records, a final and complete copy of said documents, so that we can attempt to present you with a final disposition on your application. Therefore, please provide to the board the following information for inclusion in our review. One, bring purchase and sales agreement between owner of land and American Building and Remodeling Corporation of America. That's Tom Frangos, and the owner of the land, Tompkins, Disjardins Trust. Submit any plan, two, submit any planned text revisions to the ZBA and also through tenant engineering. Highlight any changes made. The last complete submittal was five eighteen, two thousand and twelve, and we understand they may be, there may be changes to those that make the current version different. Three, submit a plan that shows all neighboring land owned by the same owner at all points of public access to the property. Four, perform a traffic study on the design implications and propose project on the surrounding traffic patterns, and submit the board for review. Five, revise the descriptions in the waiver request to specifically explain the anticipated outcome of granting the waiver. Example, instead of asking for a waiver from the planning board rules and regulations for side yard setback, ask that the side yard setback requirement be reduced from fifteen feet to five feet. Now, that's just an example. Six, while floodplain issues denigrated by Raleigh Conservation Commission in its letter of five twelve, two thousand and twelve, are not directly tied to the 40B application review process, the board upon advice of town council suggests to applicant that it complete its efforts to respond to the con con with regard to stormwater management issues, since it is conceivable that impacts caused by meeting stormwater regulations could force the applicant to again revise his plans and hence require further review by the board. Seven, a complete line item response to each section, including site description and the attached letter of review by Graham Associates provided to the Raleigh Planning Board and the zoning board on November twenty-second, two thousand and eleven, with specifically guide to any recommended changes therein, which have since been incorporated into your current set of plans, either provided in May of two thousand and twelve or as filed a new submission in response to this current request. The board understands that the material noted above have been previously submitted, may have been previously submitted in some form, but due to the extent timeframe in which we have operated over the period of three years from the original submission date, the application, we believe it is appropriate to have the most current information concerning the proposal project available. In our ongoing effort to work in good faith with you, with your desire to build this project, but also feeling like the process has exceeded a timeframe which even reasonable parties to, to such a process would consider is practical, we will allow you sixty days to assemble this information, effectively continuing the hearing until July eighteenth, two thousand and thirteen. Upon receipt of said materials, in whatever condition they may be provided, the board expects to begin deliberation of the application in its entirety, with the intent rendering a decision as fairly as possible convenient. Sincerely, John W. Thurston, Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals. And as I said before, copies of this letter is going to Tom Frangos and, uh, and, uh, Mr. Tompkins.
I think the board has been very fair, and I want to apologize for the length of time it's taken, but the regulations being what they are, they're very, very complex. The, the stormwater regulations were changed, uh, almost in the middle of our application. And just to put things in perspective, Emily Lane, which is a little over two thousand feet in length, which is double the length of the proposed Marion Way, if you look at the computations of Emily Lane versus Marion Way, Emily Lane is about ten percent of the size of the computations. The regulations have been severely modified. We have to abide by them. We don't have any choice, but they are very, very complex. And we made a couple of false starts, one of them being that we wanted to put the stormwater detention underground to, to keep for, for looks and for safety, only to find out that the, the cost was prohibitive. And I kinda violated one of my own cardinal rules, and I should have separated the salesman from the product. You know, they say, "You can do this, you can do this," but they don't, they don't take the ultimate cost in, in consideration. So, right now, we have a design for two infiltration basins. And all the computations are done. Ninety-eight percent of the plans are done. And today, we're working on submitting a notice of intent to the Conservation Commission. And I talked to Brent even this afternoon, and we're gonna be on the schedule for the, for their June meeting. So it's, it has taken a long time, but the regulations are, they're very complex.
If we were to approve this project right now, how soon would the owners be able to start building? Or is it something that's still planned on down the road? Would they, are they planning on building right away?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We have the lunch or stuff.
I mean, Tom Frangis was here at the meeting, and he's, he calls me, uh, once, twice a week, "How's it going?"
Well, like the letter says, you know, if you, you get us as much as you can, John, and the board is interested, you know, we have a, we have a consultant who's working with us. We have interested parties that are prepared. The, we've included in there, um, the Graham review.
Right, right.
And there's, there's a lot of apparent constructive suggestions, and we, we want your feedback on. Once you give us everything back, whatever you give us at that point, we'll, we'll, we'll do our best to come forth with something.
And I understand the board, you know, if you want, want us to reduce one unit, and we've agonized over this, it just, it's just as uneconomical. The price of lumber keeps going up. We're importing lumber from Canada. While our forests in the States are burning, we have to import lumber, and the price keeps going up. And I'm afraid the estimates I've made may be on the low side.
Well, we'll do what we can.
Well, one of the things that, uh... You know, you submitted to us waiver requests and so forth. And we gave an example there of what we want. The other thing is, I would like to see, you know, a revised, uh... Oh, what do I call it? You had to submit at the very beginning, you know, how much it's gonna cost, and how much profit you're gonna make, and so forth, and whatnot. And I'd like to see a revised...
Pro forma.
Pro forma, that's it. A revised pro forma. And as far as waivers are concerned, I'd like to see how in dollars you're asking to waive this particular item. I want to know what that item's gonna cost.
Okay, let me, is that my copy?
That's your copy.
I mean, let me make a note on there.
Okay, you understand what I'm...
Exactly, no, perfectly, yeah.
Understand what I'm saying. Now, if you wanna, if you want to quickly read that over as I read it?
No, you made it clear when you read it, Don.
If you have any questions...
No, and I appreciate the letter you sent last month. It, I'm sure it took an awful lot of effort and time, and again, I apologize for it, it's just that, the regulations are very, very complex. As you will see when you get a copy of the report. And I'm gonna submit the report to the Conservation Commission, but I'll hold off giving you a copy until we get the final report back from Camet. Put the whole package together, so you have it in one package, if that's acceptable.
You know, I think if you get it in by...
The July meeting.
Right, you gotta give us what you got by July.
Alright.
Whether, you know, we're not at the point where we want to wait for for Camet or anybody else to spend five months thinking about it.
Yeah, okay.
We don't want piecemeal again.
So give us what you got, is what it comes down to.
Yeah. Yeah, I may not have it by that time, but we'll see.
That's fine. You know, we recognize that, we understand. We hope you understand that we're gonna decide what we got.
Alright. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Alright, thanks, John.
Make a continuance here?
Yeah, no, I think you're right, I think we have the board, I mean, we told them, but I think we...
Yeah, we'll make a continue. Make a motion that we continue this at a July meeting? Is that alright?
I'll second it.
Okay, Louis, can you second? All in favor?
Aye. Yeah. You see, you have that now.
If we make a motion, are we adjourned, or we have more to speak?
No, I got nothing.
You have anything you'd like to say?
What you have to say?
Nope. You have anything you'd like to say? You have anything you'd like to say? You have anything you'd like to say?
No.
Yes, I do, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
I love you confirmed it.
Seconded over?
Aye.